County IDA, which is obviously on the county level. And then there's the possibility of the Grain Valley IDA, which at this point in time is not formed, and that was the issue that we brought forward. Kind of threshold, though, to getting to that point was, one of the questions that came up is why do we have to do, use a conduit issuer here as opposed to other bond issuances that the city has done in the past? And one of the primary reasons is that this is a TIF bond issuance. The authority comes from the TIF Act, and the city hasn't done TIF issuances in the past. And in part, the reason for using a conduit issuer here, because this is tax increment financing authority, is to just make the issuance cleaner from a legal standpoint, because there are some questions as to the authority in the TIF Act on that. And with that, what I'll do is I'll invite bond counsel to come forward to talk a little bit more with you about that particular issue that was raised as we were moving towards this. And so I'll invite Sid Douglas forward, and then Sid can also answer some additional questions about the comparison of the various conduit issuers that are there.
Good evening. Sid Douglas with Gilmore and Bell. As Joe said, our concern with the tax increment financing as being proposed is that we're using a number of different revenue sources. We have the TIF revenues, which is your normal pilots and eats that are revenue stream. The statute also authorizes the city to use the net new revenues that are derived from the redevelopment area, which would also be available to pay debt service on the bonds. But in order to accomplish this financing, we're also going to have to use the general annual appropriation pledge of the city. And the statute does not specifically authorize the expansion of the revenue sources to be used to pay for TIP loans that way. To, excuse me, I've got a little bit of a cold. In order to deal with that situation, the Industrial Development Authority statute, as well as the statute that deals with the Missouri Development Finance Board, allows the city to cooperate with those issuers and to use other revenue streams to provide for the payment of the debt service on those bonds. So that is the reason that we're recommending using some kind of a conduit issuer, whether it's the formation of your own local industrial development authority, whether it's using the Missouri Development Finance Board, which is a statewide issuer, or the Jackson County Industrial Development Authority, which is already in existence. Within, among those three alternatives, which is the way that we can accomplish the TIF financing is contemplated in the redevelopment contract that you've already approved, the Missouri Development Finance Board has a number of fees and expenses. They have an issuer fee. They also have separate council fees that will be involved, and so the cost and expense of having them participate in this financing, I think, puts the transaction in an economic disadvantage that we're, the revenue streams and the sources of revenues compared to the debt service and the costs that need to be paid. And we're dealing with a very tight budget to make sure that everything works. And so adding those costs and expenses over and above what else is going on, I think, puts the transaction under some additional stress. The other alternative would be the Jackson County Industrial Development Authority, but it also has a separate fee schedule that would be involved. We're not aware that they have separate council that would charge a significant fee, but they usually have a separate council that will be involved in transactions. And so even though the fees are not nearly as great as would be incurred if we use the Missouri Development Finance Board, those fees would be involved, and again, putting stress on the financial transaction. And that was why we have recommended that the city reactivate, if you will. You previously had an industrial development authority, but the charter was forfeited, and we've suggested having that reformed so that you could use that in this situation. It provides a couple of different advantages, that there's probably no, well, there's no legal reason that they have to charge any issuer fees or have any separate attorney's fees involved in the financing related to the transaction, as well as you have people from your local community that's familiar with what's going on, that doesn't have to have the transaction justified in a way that might be different if it was the Missouri Development Finance Board or the Jackson County Industrial Development Authority. Those other two are just that much further removed from the importance of this project to your community. As well as, the other thing that's important to keep in mind, too, is like the Missouri Development Finance Board has requirements that the transaction be rated or have other requirements that might be imposed on the transaction. And so it's just easier to deal with the local industrial development authority. You'll have some incidental costs to file the articles of incorporation. There'll be some minimal ongoing annual costs to file registration reports, but in the grand scheme of things, those, compared to the other two alternatives, is significantly less, and leaves the transaction in a much more financially stable circumstance. That was the basis of our recommendation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Is there any less risk to the city on any of these?
No, from a financial standpoint, the city's exposure is the same for each of the three alternatives. It's just a matter of what additional financial drain, paying cost and expenses really, the issuance of the bonds that would be incurred that would put you in a better financial situation.
Well, I know one question that's going to come up, and almost everyone in this room, is we're going to have someone saying, "What's the cost?" And this is why I was wanting to be sure that it was going to be less for us to do it this way.
Yes.
And there would be no risk more taken by the way we're doing it.
No, there's no additional risk. I mean, you've already contemplated that you'll have your annual corporation pledge behind the financing, and that'll be the same in each of the three alternatives. The only thing we're trying to do is eliminate the additional risk or additional financial burden related to the issuance of those bonds to make the financing work a little bit better.
Thank you.
Does this, when you mention this is purely for a TIF-type transaction only?
Well, we're utilizing it for a TIF in this situation, but the industrial development authority could have a number of different uses, and that's one of the reasons why it's nice. Most, well, a lot of communities have industrial development authorities in place that they can utilize to finance commercial manufacturing industrial-type transactions.
Well, that's where I was going with it. Is there other benefit besides just what we're doing with it right now?
Absolutely. Yes. I mean, the specific reason that we suggested forming it is to help accomplish your TIF financing. But it does, beyond that, have the possibilities to be used in other circumstances, and having it in place, there's no additional cost of having it in place to help you accomplish those other transactions that might come up.
Any additional questions?
Now would be the time to ask the questions that you might have, because once the workshop is over, when these items do come up and they are available to you tonight, these gentlemen will no longer be here.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on Anthony?
No.
Okay. I'll move on to the next item, revenue forecasting.
Yes, as I mentioned to the board last week in discussing the revenue forecasting, I told you that a delivery would be coming. We were finishing looking at proposals provided by two separate firms that would come in and provide this service for us. The firm that we're looking at right now, as you referred to, is RERC, Real Estate Research Consultants. We've been dealing with Dave Garcia there, and Tom, if you don't mind, if we could just do a brief synopsis as to the purpose of the revenue forecasting and that service, that scope of service, and what it will do for the city.
Sure. Okay. Great. Evening. Back with me again, Tom Calico of Springstead. The revenue forecast, I know it's been a long time, so I'm going to go back over some stuff we've talked about before. The revenue forecast is actually a very pivotal piece of the agreement that we have with SGE Property Management, Paul Arenas' firm. It serves two, it's going to serve two very important purposes, maybe three. First and foremost, we're proposing to do, well, in the agreement that you have with SGE Property Management, it says that there will be a revenue forecast conducted with each bond issued. So number one reason for that is with each bond issue, we want to forecast out how much revenue we think the development will produce, both in property tax and sales tax increment. And what we, well, to be able to take then, and from that amount of tax revenue that we're, that's projected, and we can determine, okay, would this project at full build-out, at least best estimate right now, would this project at full build-out be able to support the $5.675 million in TIF bonds that's anticipated? So it's sort of a check. Each step along the way, each bond issue, will we be able to support the full amount of bonds that are projected? And that's important because everybody involved, the developer as well as the city, has an interest in knowing, okay, what, how are things projected? Because obviously, if it were to come back and say, "No, it doesn't look like it would support the full amount of bonds," then measures need to be taken. The second reason is that, you may recall, that in the agreement, the agreement says essentially that the developer can get the first $1,575,000 worth of bonds without any commitments from any businesses. That was a negotiated point back a long time ago, had a lot to do with, you know, the way the developer wanted things, as well as the way the financing goes in terms of the infrastructure, but that's, so that first $1,575,000, there are no commitments from any businesses required. For each, every dollar of bonds after that first $1,575,000, the developer has to prove up that they, that the businesses will produce enough revenue to support those bonds at coverage of 125. Coverage of 125, meaning that there's a dollar and 25 cents of revenue for every dollar of debt service. So that's sort of that first $1,575,000, sort of, you know, free, no backup, but everything after that, there has to be a backup. And then what happens over time with that coverage, of course, is as the development builds out, essentially, we end up with enough revenues to pay all the bonds. So the second thing that's important about this revenue forecast is it allows us to say, okay, beyond that first $1,575,000, how much can we support? With this first bond issue, at least what the developer is telling us right now, we'll have the first, you know, the first $1,575,000, and then it appears that we'll have at least the movie theater. So we will be issuing some bonds in excess of that first 1.575. So it will serve that purpose. And then kind of a related third purpose that it serves is, this report actually goes in the official statement. The official statement is essentially the disclosure document that we will provide to potential investors so that they can learn about this investment and decide whether or not it's an investment that they wish to make. So it's an important piece of that disclosure that investors will be looking for. So that's essentially it. Let me pause there before I answer the second question and see if there's any questions on the purposes of the revenue forecast.
Basically, you have a balance and check system.
Yeah, and you can imagine, I mean, yeah, it's, we have, it's, this is really kind of proving up to us, to the developer, and to potential investors, okay, is this a viable project? Which leads me, I guess, to the second part, which is the process that they'll take. RERC, or Real Estate Research Consultants, is one of the larger providers of this service. They're based out of Florida. Our firm has considerable experience with them. We've worked with them on quite a few projects, some much larger than this project. And they will do a pretty exhaustive analysis in terms of, they'll take information, of course, from the developer, and they're going to need information from the developer, both in terms of those, what we're calling, committed businesses, which I'm saying, at least this first bond issue is almost certainly going to be the movie theater, and perhaps others, perhaps not, but we'll find out soon. And then also, their ideas about how the rest of the development is likely to shake out, in terms of what types of tenants and how many square feet they'll each have, that kind of thing. So they'll take that, and then they are preparing, they are preparing to do a little bit of feasibility, although I want to stress, this is not a market feasibility report. This isn't, sometimes at the very beginning of a project, you'll have someone like RERC come in and give you a report on, well, just how feasible is this project? That's not the focus here. The focus on this one is what are the likely revenues? But in order to get to that, they are going to do a little bit of market feasibility in terms of looking at what are competing businesses, because they need to take that into account, because obviously, you know, if there's a XYZ business at this interchange, and there's another XYZ business at the next interchange, well, that's probably going to influence how much revenue both of those businesses would have, right? They're two competing, you know, alike businesses. So they will take that into some account. They will then do quite a bit of work in terms of talking to the businesses themselves. Companies like RERC are, have had pretty good success in talking to businesses themselves and them sharing projected revenue information. They'll also go to available governmental records, both state level and county level. They'll then be preparing forecasts, and it'll be in two basic pieces, following along the lines of what I discussed a moment ago. There'll be, this is the revenue that we're projecting from those committed businesses, and then this is the revenue that we're projecting from the, you know, still-to-come businesses. They'll provide that. There'll be a chance to review it. All parties will have a chance to review, comment, it's finalized, and then it's placed into the official statement, as I talked about earlier, which is then provided to potential investors in the bonds.
Now, we're going after people who know that we're regenerating tax revenue, basically.
Yes. And there's a limitation, and I'm sure, I'm sure Joe could probably do it off the top of his head, but I remember, there is a limitation in the TIF contract as to how much in non-tax, sales tax-producing businesses, but it's a pretty severe limitation, as I recall.
What is the cost of this service?
You know, we don't have...
We don't have that yet. They're finishing up the scope, and that's why you don't have this bill in front of you this evening. I just wanted to take this opportunity at this workshop to bring this information in front of you and explain it a little bit more. We are working out those items right now. He's looking at the full scope of the project to determine what that would be. We just got this today, and I wanted to get it to you first thing this evening so that you could start reviewing and get some learnings out of it.
And I'm glad you asked that question, because it's a point I wanted to cover. The city itself will not be writing a check for this work. This work will be included in the bond issue as one of the costs of issuance, so it'll actually end up being paid from the bond issue now. It does, of course, increase the cost of the bond issue, but I can't stress enough what a absolutely critical piece this is. You want a thorough, as accurate as possible forecast, because obviously, the city's putting its annual appropriation behind these bonds. So we want to know as much as we possibly can and go into this making as, you know, intelligent a decision as we can. And so this is a very critical piece, so it's important to hire someone and pay them adequately enough that they will come in and do a thorough job. And like I said, we've had experience with this firm, and they've performed very admirably in the past.
So have you had this in the past with other bond issues?
You wouldn't have had this unless it was a revenue bond issue tied to, you know, a development like this. You wouldn't have had to do this before, and the only other TIF that you've approved was what's called a pay-as-you-go TIF, which means there were no bonds. The developer essentially is reimbursed from the tax increment as it's produced. There was, so they're basically, they spent the money upfront, and then as the tax increment is generated each quarter or what have you, they're making payments to the developer to reimburse the developer. So you haven't had this situation before.
We've only got one TIF, though.
Right. And that was a pay...
That's David Lloyd.
Right. And as I was saying, that's a pay-as-you-go TIF. So there were no bonds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The board? University management agreements?
Yeah, mayor, board. If you guys probably recall, last year around April, we went into, entered into an agreement with the Central Jackson County Fire District, City of Blue Springs, Lake Tapewingo, and ourselves for the services of emergency management. And part of that agreement is, is that we are supposed to give an annual update as to what has gone on, you know, since prior year. So at this time, I'm going to introduce Deputy Chief Todd Farley with the Central Jackson County Fire District, and he's going to get some talking points on that, and then if we have any questions or anything at the end, we'll be happy to try and answer them for you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for having me out this evening. I appreciate it. Just a little bit of history as to how we came to this point. CJC EMA started a long time ago, and for several years, it kind of went on as a responsibility to the fire district to take care of. I want to say, at least three years ago, we approached the cities and said, "We need to do business a little bit better when it comes to emergency management." And with that came kind of the re-energizing of the CJC EMA. And one of the things that we wanted to really make sure that we did was make sure that there truly was a cooperative agreement and a partnership between the cities and the fire district with the EMA. And so what we've done is with each city, we have a coordinator. The coordinator for the City of Grain Valley is Chief Ambrose, and then each of the other cities has a coordinator, and then I'm the director of the EMA. And so we set up pretty much an established set of goals that we want to accomplish. It's kind of a slow-moving process. Some things have come along pretty quickly and some haven't. I think one of the biggest advantages that we've seen over the last couple of years is just the cooperative spirit now between, not just the fire district and the cities, but between the cities when it comes to emergency management. And so the first bullet point that you see is the blizzard that we had last year. And this was really the first disaster, and it makes that weird for me to say it, but I'm kind of thankful that it was a lizard, slow-moving, large-impact type of storm, but it was slow. We had plenty of time to put together the stuff that we'd been working on at a nice, comfortable pace to be able to make it all come together and work. And so if you remember back to that time period, we did not activate REOC except for our emergency operations center, except for one 12-hour time period. The rest of it was handled through phone calls and then pretty much an update every 12 hours. We brought the mayors of all the cities in at the point right where it was supposed to get to be the worst, and conducted a briefing so that those chief elected officials could come back to their body and say, "We're going to be needing to do an emergency declaration." And so I just wanted to bring that up, because you had players in that, during that disaster, that were incredibly valuable to all of us. Chief Ambrose being one of them, your public works director, Ryan Hunt. And this was really a lot of public works disaster, any type of storm like a blizzard or an ice storm. Public works was just overwhelmed, and not for just 12 hours or 24 hours. Usually, especially when it gets to the disaster phase, it's a six-month to a year ordeal. And at that time, Ryan was new. He was still fairly new to the organization. And so they partnered up with the City of Blue Springs and Lake Tapewingo and the fire district, and we did really what we needed to do to make sure that we were serving the public in that disaster. And so, and then you had, of course, the department heads that did an outstanding job of providing information to all of us, to the EOC, so that we could formulate the next 12 hours and keep all of you very informed. So that storm was beneficial in our learning curve, and I put on your first bullet point that this is a lesson learned, and there were several lessons for us that we did learn throughout that disaster. Bullet number two is the local emergency operations plan update. We have not done an update with the LEOP, Local Emergency Operations Plan, for several years. I want to say it's been at least six years. And so as the coordinating group and I have sat and talked about this, we've talked about we need to update this. And so for about the last six months, we have been in an update phase. We're stepping away from the annex form of the emergency operations plan, which is the very traditional way of having an emergency operations plan. We're redoing it to meet up with what the federal government has done. The state of Missouri hasn't quite done this yet and gone to what's called the Emergency Support Function, the ESF, EOP, Emergency Operations Plan. And so we are rewriting this to be in line with what the federal government has as far as emergency operations plan. It does take a lot of work, and we've given ourselves a fairly realistic timeline to do this, and about a year and a half. And we're putting it out that far, because all of us have a lot of different responsibilities in our everyday work life. And so we have formed up committees to address each one of the emergency support functions so that we have an emergency operations plan at the end of this that has been written by the people that will be using it. One of the emergency support functions is law enforcement. And so the people that are working in that committee are police officers from Grain Valley, Blue Springs, Lake Tapewingo, Jackson County Sheriff, the school district, Blue Springs has their own police department. And so on that committee are representatives from each department. And so when they write that ESF, it will be an ESF for law enforcement that is tailored to our jurisdiction, all right? And so we felt that was really one of the best ways to do this. Instead of having a cookie cutter type of emergency operations plan, we want something that's meaningful to all of us. So that's bullet number two. Bullet number three is the community education and outreach. We kind of, we kind of did this by accident, and it seems like about every three to six months, we have put together some sort of training program for you, for department heads within the city, for employees in the city, and members of the community. We kind of like doing this, and we feel like it's better preparing not only city government, but also the public for any sort of disaster. And so you can see the different classes that we've done within the last year at our training. Tornado sirens is a large part of that financial impact that we have annually. Every tornado siren, we have 26 throughout the emergency management agency, so within Grain Valley, Blue Springs, Lake Tapewingo, and some out in the county area that we're responsible for. Those sirens are maintained. Before we entered into the agreement last year, some of those sirens were maintained and some of them weren't, and we wanted to fix that. And one of the biggest problems was, there was three or four people that had their hands involved with maintaining the sirens, who pays for what? And so as a coordinating group, we fixed that. There's one person responsible to make sure that those sirens work, Amit. We made sure that there is a maintenance agreement and maintenance done on each one of those sirens. It's being done. We still find sirens just about every single monthly test that don't work. That's normal. They're mechanical. What we're not finding is multiple sirens that are not working. It's not uncommon to have one out of the 26. The maintenance agreement that we have with Blue Valley Public Safety, which is a business in your community, they're the ones that maintain them for us, they have to fix that siren once we know it's broken within 48 hours, all right? And they've held true to their word. They're very good at what they do. So that's the tornado sirens. The Emergency Management Performance Grant. Last year, we applied for this EMPG grant. This grant is a federal grant. It's one of the few federal grants that are remaining funded and quite well. We did get it last year. We were notified very late in the year that we had received it, all right, which is kind of unusual. And what we found out is, we had to have been following the rules with the EMPG grant from January 1 of 2011, and we didn't know that we had the grant until September of 2011. So we were not following the rules of that grant, because we had no idea that we had it. And so because of that, the technical part of it is, we were not able to get reimbursed for some of the funds that we had put in for. We have reapplied for that grant this year. Since we've already been awarded that grant before, the likelihood of us being successful in getting that grant again is very high. So we're anticipating that we are going to get that grant, and we'll probably be notified again later in the year. The difference is, this year, we're following all the rules of that EMPG grant from January 1 on, so that if we do get it, we're, you know, we can start the reimbursement. Part of the reason that this grant is important is, once it's funded, once your, once your organization is funded by this, they don't just take it away. I mean, unless there's a drastic reduction at the federal level of the EMPG funds, that's the only way it could be taken away, or at least reduced. And that has not happened to any of the emergency management agencies in the Kansas City metro area that have these grants. They've not been reduced. They've only grown in funds. And so I'm saying that because what you have contributed... And so I'm, I'm saying that because what you have contributed financially to the CJC EMA, there's portions of that that will be reduced. All right? And so you, you're funding that $8,000 towards the CJC EMA. Part of the funding of that, what Grand Valley provides, is to pay for some of our employee funds that we have to expend. And that is shared between the fire district and the two other cities along with Grand Valley. And so part of that EMPG grant helps to pay for those funds. So you could see a reduction in what you're paying to the CJC EMA every year because of that grant. Okay? So that's why that's really important. It's a performance grant. They want to see some kind of performance with that. There are very strict measurements that we have to follow in order to keep that grant. And, and that's our responsibility to make sure that we do. And quite frankly, the, the coordinators, myself and the folks that are working with the EMA are, are pretty excited about some of the, the performance measurement areas that they ask us to take care of. So I can provide any amount of information that you want on that EMPG. I just wanted to give you an update of where it is because I know that that had been talked about before.
Is that a multi-year grant?
It is a grant that you have to renew and make application for every year.
Every year?
Yes. And, and that's what I was kind of talking about a little bit before where, once you get it, they're funding positions. Those EMPG grants are primarily funding positions around the country. And so even though you have to reapply every year, you're more than likely going to be successful every year getting that grant back. And like I was saying, in Kansas City, there isn't one department that has the EMA, or I'm sorry, the EMPG grant that has not been able to get it back every single year. It's only grown for most of them.
So is it a fixed amount?
It is. It's a, well, it's what you put in as far as a budget. This year, what we applied for is $91,000. It is a 50% share. All right? And so out of that $91,000 divided in half, and that's what the feds would reimburse up to is, is half of that $91,000. With those requirements, we have training requirements, exercise requirements, there's federal requirements as far as fulfilling the national incident management system and completing the update, staying up to date on it, which means that the city of Grand Valley, as well as all the others in the EMA, have to be up to date on the national incident management system and all of the planning components, which part of those, a large part of those planning components falls right back to that emergency operations plan. I know there's been a lot of discussion on radios. Communications is a lot, a large part of NIMs. And so everything that, that you have been working towards here in Grand Valley is all, it has a lot to do with what the feds are looking for is NIMs compliance. As far as the budget, you can see what each city and fire district pays into as far as the EMA. You can see in, in the four items below that, the five tornado sirens that the city of Grand Valley has within your city limits is approximately $3,000. Part of what, and I wish I had a more definitive cost for you, but it's new having the five tornado sirens in Grand Valley included in that maintenance. And so as we go through and we're finding broken sirens or things that need to be replaced, the cost goes up. Right now, it's right around $500 to $600 to maintain a siren annually. As the improvements are made, I'm hoping that it will be reduced because it will take fewer times for a maintenance person to go and touch that siren and fix it. And so I'm hoping to see a reduction in that. There's training, the coordinators. We want to make sure that coordinators and our planner stay current and it's part of the requirement of that EMPG. And so these folks have done quite a bit of the training that's required for the EMPG grant along with the SEMA conference that is coming up in April. It's a valuable conference. It's in Missouri. It's fairly cheap and it's someplace that the coordinators, myself and the planner go to, to take advantage of learning from the state, the federal government folks that present, and the National Weather Service actually that's quite a bit there too. So it's valuable. There's professional services, people that are helping us write this emergency operations plan in the ESF format, and then community outreach and education, and then operational expenses incurred by CJC Fire Protection District. All right? Our planner is actually a fire apparatus engineer as his full-time job, but he's also a young man that has a bachelor's degree in emergency management and a master's degree in public administration. And he, he is made for this planning type of work that he's doing. And so that is, that is knowledge and experience and work that the three cities and the fire district are all sharing. And so part of that $8,000 that you contribute into this helps to pay his expenses, what we pay him to do as far as the planning aspect. And then you can join us on Facebook. And I put that in there because, you know, sometimes we see Facebook as kind of a fun information, information sharing experience for all of us, but we want to be able to use Facebook and the CJC EMA Facebook page as an information sharing tool for you and for your citizens. And, and a lot of people are on Facebook and it just gives them the opportunity to see what we're doing and during emergency situations or severe weather, which we're coming up on that season, we plan on sharing any information that we're getting from the National Weather Service on that page, as well as other avenues that we have. And then the last one is Code Red. Code Red has been around for a while. It is an emergency notification system. I want to say we've had it for about three years. It is something that the fire district and the city of Blue Springs pay for. If you are a resident of the fire district, you can be a part of Code Red. It is an up-to-date emergency notification. And so if you go to our website, city of Blue Springs website, and from what I understand today, soon to be your city's website, any of your citizens can sign up for this. You have to opt in for the weather function. You'll go through, you'll be directed to a page where you sign in and you decide what it is that you want to be notified about. And the weather emergency side of it is something that you have to push a button that says, "Yes, I want to be notified." My wife and I have been a part of this Code Red and, and we enjoy using it. It's nice to have that notification. We're usually getting it and then able to call home and, or where my child works and say, "There's a tornado coming." So, you know, it's very quick and, and easy to use and you can get it on your cell phone, your home phone, email, fax machine. And so it's just a very valuable tool. And it's free. And you're, no one has to pay for it. It's already paid for. So if you have any questions, that's all I have as far as an update.
I have a couple, but you're not going to be happy. As we all know, I, I'm, I'm one for SERC. I've been through Central Jack, went through Independence, went to train the trainer. But there's one thing I know that we're, we're lacking here and I'm sorry. But you know, we have people in my neighborhood in their older homes and a lot of the area around that are on flat surfaces. And I know at one time, we were all welcome to go to the Baptist church, but they don't do that right now because they're afraid of, I'm sorry to say, lawsuits. And I know that, I feel comfortable on my street because I know where the handicapped people are. I know who has what for animals and I know, and I've, I've been instructing them, have a crate so that, one of the most horrifying things I say involving is that if your animal will get upset and they could shoot the same hole, which is scary because when you come to a responding situation, he's protective and he could hurt the first responders. And then of course, one of my threats with the police chief is, you know, he can close the city down and if you don't have enough groceries in the cabinet, the chief's going to be doing all the shopping. You trust him. So that's to get them prepared. But I know some people would feel a little better knowing where is it that they can be taken to. I mean, I know my next door neighbors, 260 pounds in a wheelchair. I will go over and put her in her shower stall and that's what she wants me to do.
Your, so your question is directed towards sheltering or what you do is something bad?
Sheltering.
Sheltering?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's going to be hard. I've already got two or three neighbors that I try to make sure I get and-
Sheltering is, is part of the emergency operations plan that, that we are taking on. And because you're right, we're not real strong in a lot of our sheltering capabilities. And we talked recently about the facilities right here in Grand Valley, the community center, and what can we do to help make that more of a sound emergency shelter. And it would probably be more of a short-term type of shelter, generator power, these types of things. And so we're just, we're just getting into the sheltering part of this, of the emergency operations plan. It is part of the ESF, one of the ESF functions is regarding shelter. The governor also has a faith-based sheltering program that's in place that is trying to take some of that liability away from the churches so that they, and the schools, especially the faith-based schools. To help take some of that, that liability away, give it to somebody else. And so to get, short version is, we understand, we know, we know that we have a weakness there that's being worked on and it's one of the areas that we know we have to grow with.
If I may add though, and that's the thing though, sheltering's not just an issue in Grand Valley. Sheltering's an issue in Kansas City. Sheltering is an issue in Independence, you know? I mean, you go down the line, down I-70, I think that's probably one of the most difficult things because if you think of sheltering in terms of, if a tornado comes through, your shelters may be gone. Your identified sheltering may not be there. So there's so many different ways to go about that. Sometimes you have to wait until that disaster is over with to figure out where is going to be the sheltering. How are we going to, red crosses coming in, whatever.
This is one of those areas where FEMA has dictated that the, the community should be able to shelter 25% of its population. All right? And so when we look at that at the metro, at a metro-wide type of disaster, there are roughly 20,000 sheltered spots in the entire metropolitan area. All right? So that kind of lets you know that back to, we're talking about a 1.5 million population roughly in the entire Kansas City metro area and we have the ability to shelter 22,000 people. And so it's, it's not just a, it's not just a problem in Grand Valley or Blue Springs or Lake Tapewingo. This is a metro-wide, this is a St. Louis metro, a Minneapolis metro problem. As far as the other part of your question that you asked, what, preparedness is the key. And that when you talk about some of your neighbors who have some difficulties or they live in a slab home, you know, there is no basement. The idea is prepare for now. What are you going to do now? And firsthand experience, after being in Jocklin, a large part of that community was unprepared. They, they did not prepare for this. There were some very extreme examples of how prepared some people were, whether they were in slab homes or, or had basements or crawl space. But the idea is what are you going to do? Because that's what I'm going to ask you. You live, and I, I don't know where you live, but if you live in a slab home, what are you going to do when the tornado siren goes off? Because I'm not going to be able to take care of you right then. That is-
I'll prepare.
Okay.
I have my dog food, little Baggy. I have my backpack with what you guys change with my helmets and everything else. And of course, all my utilities to shut on and off. And I would probably the first thing to do would be shut off the gas, which I have strict orders. I have to have written permission from out of my neighbors if I'm going to do theirs. But, and I have food. And I, I always tell everybody, you know, it's the simplest things that would surprise you.
Yes, it would. And that's what we encourage everyone to do. And if you need some education or help in, in trying to decide, I'd be more happy to help you do that as a community, looking at it as, from a community standpoint, doing everything you can to be prepared. And that's one of our objectives now with the, we've been doing it for the last couple of years, is making sure that the community is prepared.
But everyone, mind one suggestion. Take his neighborhood watch people because they're familiar with their neighborhood and they would know like I know where it's online. And that enables to help you. And I, I encourage everybody to go through the SERC training.
We have a SERC class starting on the 5th of March. And this will be our third SERC class. It'll bring, I believe, our numbers up to right around, pretty close to 100 now as far as volunteers in the community that have gone through the Community Emergency Response Team training.
And we are shooting for a fall class here in Grand Valley.
Thanks.
They're having, I want to say five to six Grand Valley residents that have completed that SERC training.
I have trained, I have completed yours, but I completed both Grand Valley's first ones and then I completed Independence and I've gone all the way through training, the training which, so that's why I go around.
Great.
Real quick wrap-up. I just want to kind of point out how fortunate we are to be in a, in a fire district and it's a pretty unique situation. Not everybody's as fortunate as we are to where we have that, that kind of a team approach when it comes to emergency management. And for the price that we pay, because most cities, this is a full-time job. I mean, emergency management isn't something that you just kind of do here and there. Jason Bonney and I can guarantee it, Deputy Chief Farley spend the majority of their time working on issues with regarding emergency management for our city alone. And we're just very lucky to be in the situation that we are, that we don't have to have the full-time dedicated funds for that type of a position. Because it's definitely necessary in this day and age with funding and how it affects our community and it could hurt us, not only in emergency management funding, but in any kind of grant funding, at any level, they can look at that and they're going to say, "If you don't have your, your ducks in a row, your emergency operations plan together, we're not going to give you any funding." So we're very fortunate to have, I think it's something that we probably don't really consider. It's kind of an oversight thing, so.
And just to reiterate, the update that you received this evening is part of the overall contract, contractual agreement that we have with CJC to provide those emergency management services. And I want to thank Deputy Chief Farley for coming this evening.
You're welcome. It was my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Saying nothing else on, under discussion, we will go ahead and adjourn from work session and re-adjourn the record session in approximately 10 minutes.